Record the members present.
Wilson.
Simmons.
Here.
Babcock.
No, I'm here.
Reed.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Consent agenda, the following items may be approved entirely by the board upon motion made, seconded and passed by majority. Any member may request a separate vote on any or all items contained in the consent agenda. Item number two is a consent. Does anybody have any questions or anything about that?
I'm going to move through the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Wilson.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item number four then is informational reports or superintendent's report.
Our gym is painted. If you saw the game, it's done. It took them a little while. Took a couple callbacks, but they worked with us. They got it done. I've heard nothing but pauses about it. Looks really good. Lots of detail. They came and cleaned up, so it looks really good. And I'm very thankful. They got it done. Glad it's done. It was a little hassle. Our webpage has gone live. Head that up. This is our new school webpage that... We've still got a long way to go to get all the information on there. But this is our new webpage. One of the things... All teachers will have their own page and have access and be able to do their own things with it. But one of the things I wanted to show you is the calendars. We will eventually have all of our calendar events. You can see our webpage links to Facebook. So any of our Facebook posts automatically come to our webpage. Same with Twitter. If we have any tweets, it'll automatically come up there. And then here in the middle is a scrolling calendar of just weekly events, weekly things come up based upon what we put in. You'll see this link here to calendars. Oh, it is hooked up. This pulls up your district calendar. Every site and every teacher will have their own calendar that they can put their own events to in. And it filters up to whatever we want it to filter to. So elementary teachers, they put stuff in on their calendar. They're going to have a Christmas party. They're going to have a this party or that. They put it on their school... Their page calendar, it'll automatically go to the elementary calendar, which will automatically go to the district calendar. Reason I'm saying that is these are subscribable, which means if you have a smartphone and you want to subscribe to our calendars, whatever level of information you want is the calendar you subscribe to. So if you want to know everything that's going on with the district, you subscribe to the district calendar because you're going to get it all. If you only want high school, or you only want athletics, or you only want your teacher's class, they subscribe to that level and that's the information they're going to give. If we end up updating this, if the person subscribed and we update the information, it automatically sends it to their phone. It automatically changes it on their calendar and their phone. Information... I mean, it's instantaneous now. The only thing that would be slow is if the person that subscribes said, "I only want it to update once a day." Most phones are set at a 15-minute interval, so every 15 minutes it would change that depending upon that person. That's something we can't control. A new feature that I didn't even know about until I started working on this, I haven't got all the events in there. I'm still working on putting events in. A new event that Gabbard has linked into their webpage or into anybody's webpage is so you find an event, you click on it. This was Friday's basketball game at Higgins, Texas. So we put in the title, we put what it is, we can put description, things like that. We can also put map information of here's where the game is. Here's where you go to. You can, from your phone, click the map feature. Automatically brings up a Google Map and you can click Directions and it'll click and drive and there you are. Because if we ever get to a place that we don't know where the gym is, or if you're someone like me that's not used to Northwest Oklahoma, I need that feature because I'm not exactly sure where I'm going.
And I have to come back while you're going to Higgins, you might miss it.
That's what I was told. So, and as I was putting in some of them, I found out that Google has some people's addresses wrong because you look and they'd have... Say they'd have the school over here rather than there and you could see it by the map. So you just go in and change and put it in by GPS coordinates and it'll still give them driving directions to that, to where it's supposed to be. So it's going to be a neat feature. It's just depending on how much we use it and how much we utilize that tool. I haven't taught teachers how to use the webpage yet. That's coming. It's quite a bit of... It's not the easiest, but once you get the hang of it, it works for a while. And then they're going to start building our app next, which will have the same information that's on the webpage. So that's why it's important that our teachers will be putting our information on there because it will automatically feed to the app. So it's in one spot, one location to get all that information. Now that we are up and going, we'll begin working on getting phone numbers and make sure the contact list is correct. Miss Link has worked very hard on making sure we have student information correct. So now those will merge and then we'll be able to start sending out the text messages about school events. This part had to get built first, so we're plugging away a lot of time on it. So hopefully everybody likes it, but it is live now, so there is some information on that. I do have a couple of things to go with and I'm going to be as quick as I can, but for the moment I'm going to break, let Ms. Shealite take over and then I'm going to come back to district overview of finances and talk about House Bill 1578.
That stuff's pretty good. The Fall Carnival, we've held that since our last board meeting. Went really well. All the grade levels raised some good amount of money. The seniors raised a substantial amount towards their senior trips and stuff that they do, so they're on the right track to get where they want to be. Red Ribbon Week, we didn't do as much this year as what I plan on in the future, but we did get some things done. All the students were involved in pledge signing saying that they supported Red Ribbon Week, which is actually still up in the cafeteria. I've left it up there so people could see what they had done. We also did stickers and ribbons and little treats and things throughout the week. So hopefully next year we can make that even bigger than what it was this year. Veterans Day Assembly, I think it went really well. Had a lot of students and teachers work to do that. Had some good guests there. We had about 20 veterans in attendance. Fed them lunch and some of their guests lunch and...
Very good lunch.
Was it enjoyable?
Yeah, very enjoyable.
Good. Then we went and had the program and I think it turned out really nice, so. We also are up and rolling with our basketball. We're getting ready to do our third games tomorrow for high school. As you can see, there were elementary and junior high in there today. Haven't been able to pull out that win on any of them yet, but we're getting closer and the kids' skills are getting better. The teamwork is getting better, so we're on the right track.
I thought the addition of the Northwestern Jazz Ensemble was a nice deal and I think whoever got them to attend should be commended.
It was very nice, wasn't it?
Yes.
Even afterwards, so it was good. And that's all I have, guys.
All right. I'm going to start with House Bill 1017. If you'll flip into your documents tab, you'll have... This comes out of... This is not the actual law, but this is a synopsis that the state Board of Education puts out. This is called... This law was passed last year, effective July 1 of 2017. And it created a task force. If you had followed this law from the beginning, it was a consolidation bill. Yeah, that's it. That's House Bill 1578. It started as a consolidation bill and then that didn't have traction and was going to die and then it got morphed into this bill to, well, we're going to study schools. The old saying is if you study, if you do a study and you get... You don't like the results, ask for another study. And that's basically what's happened here because 10 years ago, the state studied our funding formula and found that it was working exactly as it was supposed to, that it was equitable, that it was doing exactly what it was supposed to. And they didn't like that result because they were wanting something different. My ultimate opinion is this is a consolidation... It's the first step to forced consolidation in our state. In Section 2A there, it talks about, creates a task force to study and make recommendations to the legislature on improving the state aid formula. When you're asking someone to look and improve on something, you're automatically assuming that it needs improvement. That's kind of one of those... To improve it, it has to be able to be improved. It has to get better. By implying that the state aid formula needs to be improved implies there's something wrong with it. The biggest problem right now with the state aid formula, and hopefully you'll see this and I'm going to try to be very quick, but if you have questions, ask it anytime. Slow me down, stop me. But the state aid formula is doing what now what it was not intended to do. Basically fund schools that have no revenue source, that do not have a local revenue source. Everyone says, "Oh, they're cutting my state aid." They miss, and a lot of superintendents miss the nuance. It's state aid, it's not state revenue. When the original funding formula was put into place, it was to supplement local revenue with state dollars, not the other way around. Now, there's some legislators who want to flip it where the state aid formula is the primary source of revenue, not the local source of revenue. So they're wanting to change some things and basically what they're after is consolidating schools and get ahold of districts like us that have local money, that we're not on the formula. We don't have to have state. We're not dependent upon them. So if you look at the formula, though, if you'll look at a handout that flip over two pages probably, or maybe it's one page, depending how it got printed in yours, and you'll see a bunch of numbers. It says at the top, Oklahoma State Department of Education, state aid allocation, tentative state allocation. This is the state funding formula. This is sent out to every district. We get one in July. You can sort of figure it. You can't get exact because this formula has to take the metadata from across the entire state and there's no way you can get some of that information to do it yourself. But we can... I'm always really close within a couple thousand dollars if we were on the formula. I can always guess within a couple thousand dollars of where we'll be. But this is the formula. The thing I want you to notice, there's a top half. I kind of drew a line and rode top out to the left. There's a top half. There's a middle section, which is transportation. There's a bottom half and you'll see this says salary instead of aid. And then everything below the line is penalties or something else that would take money away from you. So this is our allocation. If you look there at the top, it starts with our weighted ADM, which is our... How much our students are worth. You're going to learn more about that in a minute. Based upon the factor, that's a number that comes out every year, based upon the big stake number. We don't have any control over that state aid factor. When the state cuts money, like they're proposing to now with the bill that just got passed out of committee today, it's requiring... It's asking... It's requiring all state agencies to cut a half to... Three and a half to a half a percent of their allocation. So if they cut it and they pass that... If the State Department of Ed cut that funding and passed it on to us, to districts, they would change the factor is how they change that money, how much each kid's worth. So you can see there, they take the less chargeables. That's our money that we receive locally. So you see our total chargeables is $801,000. But because that's more than what they would pay us, the $317,000, we get to keep it. We're off the formula. That's why we receive zero state aid because that number's bigger. Same thing kind of happens on the bottom in just a different way and it ends up coming out exactly the same way that we receive nothing on the bottom side. They are calculated different. That's a thing to notice. The top side is calculated by multiplication. The bottom side is calculated by division and it creates some nuances and some rounding issues, so you can never be exact. The state even has trouble being exact and will sometimes revise allocations on you and go, "Oh, we made a mistake." So it's very complicated, but this is what that task force is supposed to be looking at, is this. This is one of the things they're looking at. They're going to look at the formula. They're going to look at... Right now, as you saw in that, we only receive transportation dollars mainly because there's nothing in law that allows them to take that away because it's a separate line item. Otherwise, they would take the $6,000 away from us there. The intent of the formula is to supplement local revenue. Any changes to this formula, anything... If they come out and do any changes to this, whether it be us or any district, there automatically becomes winners and losers because this formula is trying to equalize all schools in the entire state. So any change to this will pick winners and losers. Some will lose money, some will gain money because this is one big pot. And that formula says how they're going to give that one big pot away, how many hands they're going to allow into that pot. So any... Anything's going to happen. That's what they found out 10 years ago when they looked at this. Any change we'd have would negatively affect kids, but they're looking at that right now. As you continue on in this, after the state formula, which will include but not limited to the formula, so we just talked about that, local ad valorem rates. This is our local taxes. You've heard this before. It's based upon the millage system, which is 1/1,000 of a dollar, or basically $1 per thousand is the taxable rate. In that, under the local ad valorem, you have property taxes, which is your real estate, your personal property and your public service. Under the real estate tax, there is the $1,000 homestead exemption and some people are actually able to have a double homestead exemption for $2,000. The Oklahoma Constitution limits this levy to 35% of the fair cash value. Reason I'm bringing this up, one of the problems this state of Oklahoma has had is who comes up with that fair cash value? It is derived by two main ways. One, the property sells. Now you've got a market value. Now we can assess it. What if that property has never sold? It's been in the family generations forever and ever and ever. It's supposed to be assessed by the local county assessor. That is an elected position. How do you get reelected in a public position like that? Keep taxes low. So as long as you keep taxes low, you keep citizens happy and they reelect you for that position. The outgoing state auditor has actually looked at this and that's... He created a bunch of problems for state auditors, or not state auditors, county assessors, excuse me, because they weren't following state law. They weren't assessing it correctly. They weren't going out and keeping the books up. When that got noticed, the state legislature took action as they normally do and they passed another law that said, "Oh, wait. You can never raise local... Someone's assessment more than 5% a year," I think it is. I can't remember the example. So even though that value of that property should be $100,000 and it's valued at $20,000 and we're collecting 35% of the fair market value at $20,000, we're losing some revenue. Every school in the state's losing revenue because of this. Some states... Some counties have now begun to assess correctly, have begun to fix their problem. That's something that Gary Jones has forced them to start doing, but now they're so far behind on actual value, you kind of have to have a lot of things sold to get your local value to go back up where it should be. Personal property tax, we all know what that one was. We used to... I remember filling out that form, what do I own and how much is it worth? And I'd send that to the state and send them a check for how much I owed them on that personal property tax. Counties were given the ability to say, "We're not going to collect personal property tax." And in doing so, they allowed, because school districts lost money again because that's part of our funding formula, they allowed us to go above, which we didn't control, but we were allowed to collect more on the other sources of local revenue, above the 15 mills that we can collect. We can collect more than that. So right now, we're at 18 mills, if I remember right. But... So personal property taxes, that's cattle, your... Any of your animals and your livestock. If your county... If our county did it, you'd be paying taxes on what you have and that part of that would fund our school. But our county, we don't get personal property taxes. And then, of course, you have public services. Those utilities, railroads, oil and gas, pipelines, things of that nature. That's in your county and in your school district. That's been monkeyed with along the way. Used to, every time a railroad went through, there was a tax on every rail car that went through and the local district got that money. Well, that was taken away because they said, "Well, we're not going to run rail through there anymore." So now railways have pretty well disappeared for your local source of revenues. But that's your... That's ad valorem tax. Overall, our general fund receives 38 mills, so we're above the 35-mill threshold and that's because of our personal property tax. It's the only way you can be above the 35 mills is if your county has done away with the personal property. A school board can only ask for 15 mills for our general fund. Most... I don't know when districts reach that 15-mill levy mark, but it's been there for a very long time. You... So when people say, "We're going out and raising their taxes," no, we actually have no authority to go do so. There is no constitutional way for a school board to raise our ad valorem rates. Wish we could so that we could make sure our schools are funded and other states have different funding abilities, but there's no way. We have no option. A bond is different than a levy. Make sure you realize those differences. School board, that 15, and we have no way to do that. Another source of revenue is called a county four-mill. A county four-mill came out during the 50s in the segregation movement to help fund schools and help shift everybody around. Well, that... We're pretty well desegregated. At least we are out here because you either are here or you're not. And that still is out there, though. We still receive that county four-mill. So you add that to our 38 mills and we're at 42 mills roughly of taxation. But something unique with the county four-mill versus some of the others is that is based on our average daily attendance. So every time a kid is out sick or has to go to the doctor or is gone for this or gone for that, for whatever reason, we lose a little bitty percentage of that county four-mill because it's based upon daily attendance, not daily membership. So kids are late and they're already in, that counts as an absence. There goes some of our county four-mill money. So that's a unique one that... That's one of the reasons we want kids here and we don't want them taking off and we don't want them gone because it costs us money in the long run. We want them here every day more than partial days. We need them in class. School land earnings, that's our oldest source of revenue. That was implemented when Oklahoma joined the union. The federal government gave away, I think if I remember right, it was Section 16 of every township on the plot maps and that was school land, that section of land. And that was to be used for school support. So if they sell that section of land, that fund goes into the land corporation fund. The principal balance can never be depleted and then schools receive a percentage. So farmers who lease or rent school land to for hay or for hunting or for whatever purpose that they want to bid on it, and it comes up every year that they want to bid on school lands, we get a percentage of that revenue, all schools do across the state. It's a big pot of money and it goes out. REA tax, that is in... If you have rural electric co-ops, which we do in this area. If we have those, they tax them based upon how many miles of transmission lines they have. So if they, for whatever reason, ever decided not to put a line back up or back in for whatever reason, then that could affect REA money. Motor vehicle, that's... We all pay that tax when we go buy our trucks and vehicles. That used to be a growth revenue. It is no longer a growth revenue. In 2015, the state capped that, that you will never receive... No local district will ever receive a... Any more than what they received in the fiscal year 2015, June of 2015. So that's it. They've monkeyed with it again. Anything else now goes to just the state. So as car prices go up, the state gets the rest. We... Once we're there, we're capped. Gross production, we know what that is. Oil and gas, that is a bit... Part of our money. So when the state monkeys with the per gross production taxes or percentage tax, wellhead tax, things like that, it affects our district because we get a portion of that. To the point of in 2014, 15, our district out of gross production tax received $326,000. 2015, 16, it dropped by nearly half to $174,000. And it slightly come up a little bit last year and it looks like if oil keeps going up, it may come up again unless they change some percentages again and then we'll see what happens. So those are our local revenues. That's what they take away from us that keeps us off the formula because we are local funded. So they're going to also look at the formula structure. What they're looking at here is trying to simplify that sheet... That page you just looked at to move the bottom side to the top side or make it more simple. I've seen some of the projections on what that looks like. Doesn't do a whole lot yet unless they change some other things and it could have some big impact. They're also going to look at grade levels. This is your weighted ADM. This is that top side of the money. You have a sheet on the backside or... Yeah, it should be on the backside of that funding one, the one with all the numbers on the backside of it. Or maybe another page that on the top says, "State Department of Ed, data services, detailed weight information 2018." Or it's on the front. I don't remember how I gave it to you. But it says Freedom and it shows our ADM is 78.27, ADM grade weights 12.55, special ed weight, gifted weight, bilingual weight, summer program, economically disadvantaged. These are all unique factors that go into how much our kids are worth. And I gave you another sheet. I think it's on the back of that sheet you just had that shows how much the unique weights are. Like an early childhood kid is worth 1 and 1/3. A kindergarten kid is worth 1 and 1/3. A kindergarten through... A kindergartner's worth 1 and 1/2, but a fourth and sixth worth just 1. These weights came in because they said it's cost more to educate the little ones than it does the older ones and so they give you more weight to do that. And then you add the special ed weights on top of that. So a kid that's learning disabled, you get another additional 4 tenths. An HI kid, a hearing impaired student, you'd get 2.9 added on to whatever grade they are. And so... And that's to help educate that child. Those aren't enough because you need a special ed. That's never enough money to adequately do what you need to do for those kids, but at least it helps. The only unique one out of all the weights are gifted and talented. That is in the formula, but it is the only one of all of those formulas are all those weights that we have to account for. It wasn't... The formula was never supposed to be set up that way, but the gifted students, we have to account specifically how we spent their money. So there has been talk in this group already of changing those weights. There was one proposal, "Well, let's just get rid of..." I can't remember which one it was, "Economically disadvantaged and just put all that weight into bilingual." I mean, there's... They're throwing out some weird ideas, but if they do anything they do on there, will affect schools. It affects our weights. It affects how we are funded. But if you finish up that top paragraph or that top part, transportation weights again, that's... That hasn't changed in forever and it's not worth... and it's not worth, it, it costs you more to transport kids than it does what they pay you for, so. The key phrases here, why I'm saying this is a consolidation bill. The efficient, they, they go on there to study all this and efficiencies, cost-saving measures regarding the footprint of school districts. I really don't know any other way how to read that other than let's consolidate districts because you live, you're too close to each other or you're, you've got too much overhead or we think your administration costs are too high or whatever. So if you look at section two B, this really is the devil's in the details. Here's your details. So here's who's on this committee, who's on this task force. The governor got to appoint six people on a sixteen-member task force. So she put Natalie Shirley, which is the education workforce, Secretary of Education Workforce. She is the OSU OKC president and basically will have a higher ed metro mindset. She lives in Oklahoma City, so she doesn't understand real life fully. You know, it's in that kind of mindset. She appointed Jennifer Munnies, who, her group that she's a part of has continually changed. But she has known that public education needs to be changed and we need to do a lot with, kids are coming into the business world not prepared. So public education's bad is, is kind of the mindset for Jennifer. Needs to be fixed, public ed. You got Stan Humfield, I'm assuming is, how do you say his last name? He's a doctor. He ran for the Oklahoma City School Board to be a member of Oklahoma City School Board. Sounds like a great guy, but he's a charter school guy to the point that there's a charter school named after him in Oklahoma City. And that's why he was running for the Oklahoma City School Board to help education fix the Oklahoma City Public School Systems. And then she appointed superintendent Stacy Butterfield because you had to have a superintendent from a district of over ten thousand students. How many districts in Oklahoma do we have over ten thousand students? I think there's three or four. I think there's three. Jinx Tulsa and Oklahoma City.
Pettington City too.
Pettington City's over ten, so. So one of four was going to be from them. Totally different way of running school than we would. Then you had Speaker of the House, Charles McCall, got to appoint. He appointed Mike Anderson because we needed a superintendent from a district with twenty-five hundred students to ten thousand. So this is a four A, five A district in Oklahoma. So another big school. So we got the biggest school, then we got the next big school. He's from Ada, he's superintendent of Ada. I didn't find information about Jeff Cross. He's a, from the financial sector. That's what that member had to be, from the financial sector. I don't know. I couldn't find information who that person actually was. There's lots of Jeff Crosses, but I couldn't find this guy. Then you had Representative Rogers. He's from Broken Arrow. He's a education committee chair. So he's from Broken Arrow. Then you had Superintendent Casey, Representative Casey. He's a former superintendent. So there's some hope there. He has been, he's from Morrison, Oklahoma, so a little smaller. There's a little hope on that one. Public ed supporter. Then you have Representative Caldwell from Enid area. Again, you're kind of a metropolitan area. Little bit, little bit different with Enid. I don't know Representative Caldwell at all, so I can't say anything good or bad there. The Senate got to appoint some people, had to appoint a small school superintendent. I liked how they thought that. A small school superintendent was a superintendent of a school less than twenty-five hundred members. Just less than twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred students. So they chose Monte Guthrie of Stigler. I know Monte, a good superintendent, good guy, good district, but again, you're at a two A, three A district. So we have, there's no representation from a C district, a B district, from an A district. Any of us small people, which is most of the schools in Oklahoma, we're not there. There's not a representative of all. You look at whoever, the others that the Senate had to put an auditor on, so he put Jeff Hewitt. And I believe that's the Hewitt from Sanders Blitzen Hewitt out of Tulsa, again, metropolitan. Senator Slanisowski from Tulsa, metropolitan. Senator Smalley from Stroud, a little smaller rural town. He's a chair of the Appropriations Committee for Education. And then you have Senator Fields from Wynona, from northeast Oklahoma. So out of all sixteen people, I count three that might have a clue about rural Oklahoma and might have a clue about small school. So you can see how the committee was stacked. So if you, again, if you don't like the results you got from the first time, ask for another study and stack the deck differently and you'll get a different result. So I'm fully expecting, especially with this wording they put in there, they wanted results if available on section two J. They wanted results prior to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. That's an amazing study if you can get it done in six months. But oh, if you can't, okay, we have to have them by December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. So as you can see, they were setting this up to be able to do something in this next legislative session, which is coming.
State can fix a mile of road in the city in less than six years.
I agree. And then also in this, and this is why I'm saying they're going to be looking at everything down at section four. It requires another group to be formed to specifically look at school finance, including but not limited teacher compensation, benefits, administrative costs. And they have until December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three to give their results. So I fully, I mean, I know that I'm real negative on this, but when you know the original source of this bill, it was a full consolidation bill of any school less than twenty-five hundred students must be consolidated. Was it nuts when it really began? So not great. I don't like it. Nothing I can do about it except inform you guys and let's start getting that. When the, the information starts coming out, we have to keep the phone calls going to the legislature and say, hey, leave our school alone. We're rural Oklahoma and this is what we want. This is how we want our school.
Who would you say the best to talk to is? Who would you say resides on?
I really don't know at the moment because I don't know our current representatives here. I don't know those guys yet. I haven't found very many friendly voices at the legislature. I mean, I went to church with Charles McCall and he was very friendly, but he can't, he's still pushing a lot of Republican agenda. If you look at, you take all of the metro representatives and take them and put, so Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Lawton, Enid areas, put them together, which there be very different than what we would face here. And put all, everybody, all the other representatives together. You can't outvote them. You can't outvote them. So it's a problem that they're trying to fix Oklahoma City, they're trying to fix Tulsa and they're going to, they're going to impact us while trying to fix them. And that's been the case for a while. That's the same problem we have at national level as well with education. They're trying to fix the metropolitan areas and they have no clue about rural America. About what we deal with every day, you know. So I don't have an exact person to call yet. But when I start finding a good ear, I'll let you know. Of course, I always tell everybody to call our representatives, our elected people, because we vote for them. I know I, my senator from Otoka was perking. He won't accept my phone calls anymore because I wore him smooth out. But he was doing things that was going to hurt education. I know he thought he was right from my conversations with him. I know he thought he was right, but he was dead wrong. And when his bill failed, he, he kind of realized that. So that's coming. And then I want to quickly cover some districts. Any questions about that? I think I beat that horse good. I've got, I put another sheet in your binder, Freedom Public Schools, projected revenue. This is a Excel spreadsheet that I track monthly. I went back and created three months of data, or three months, three years of data to find our revenue sources, where we received funding. And then the green column and the yellow column are the two that I watch and adjust as we go through. The different colors mean different things, but probably what's most important to you is the last page of that on the back, projected fund balances. I update this every month as well as we, as we, as I make spending decisions, as we make spending decisions. This is how I know if those are relatively good or bad decisions. We already have fund balances projected. That's, of course, if we collect all our money. Right now, we're estimated to spend one point four million. That number will always go up. We always have expenses coming. We think we've got most of it encumbered at this point of the year, but that will continue to rise some. There's always something we don't know about. So if we spend one point four million and collect everything that we anticipate collecting, we'll have a fund carryover in the general fund of nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, which will be, if I remember right, just a touch last, I'll go back one page. But this year, we carried nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand over, so we're going to dip in a little bit into our carryover, which we kind of knew by adding some depositions and doing some things we thought we needed to do for kids when we started the year. Then our building fund, we're currently estimated to spend a hundred and forty-seven thousand out of the building fund, which would be a carryover of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. Remember, you can't spend building fund on capital improvements or investments, vice versa. You can't spend general on capital improvements and invest, or reverse that, I said, I said that completely wrong. General, you cannot spend on capital improvements. So fixing lights and plumbing and heating and air and all that stuff cannot come out of general fund. It has to come out of your general fund, I mean, your building fund. And vice versa, you can't pay teacher salaries out of your building fund. It has to pay, come out of your general fund. And you got our child nutrition fund. In your child nutrition fund, you are limited what you can carry over by statute there. You can only carry over three months of operating expenses. So right now, we're at a break even because it shows eight hundred dollars in the negative, but there's nothing counted for what we would collect from actual paid lunches. So that's not in that number at all. So we're going, we're, we're right on track with child nutrition where it should be. So that's an overview. If, any questions? Overall, we're, we're right on track where we thought we would be and should be. We'll see what happens with the state, with what they change and then what happens with oil and gas. Because those could have some impacts on us. If the price of oil keeps going up, then we will collect more than we anticipated. If it goes down, we'll collect less. So that's it. Sorry.
Item five is general, a discussion concerning potential facility improvements, district needs and bone projects.
So this is just a discussion of things that we could possibly improve around our district. Won't be any votes taken or anything like that. From walking around, we, we need to do some things to our, our facilities. Some of the projects that looking at is improve the, the overall look of our district. The overall look to the front when you drive up, what does our school look like? Does it look like a nineteen forties built school or does it?
Nineteen seventy.
Nineteen seventy? I didn't know exactly when they built it.
Forty's and the seventies one just carried on with it.
Sixty. Sixty-one. This one, this was finished around, around when it was finished, sixty-one.
So we're talking seventy, seventy plus?
Sixty-one.
Nineteen sixty-one was when.
Teenage calculator.
I do.
Because when that was done and then the gym and that hallway was finished in seventy.
Take care. It's just old, but you gotta take care of it.
Yeah, we need, we need to take care of our facilities. So change the look of the outside.
My first year, like it would've been like sixty-nine.
Are, when people drive up, that's their first impression of our school. They, before a parent walks into this district, they judge us by, are we a good school or a bad school by just driving up? Brand new building and be a horrible school, but people think you're great. Have an old, worn-out building, people drive up, oh, that school's not very good. And it has nothing to do with the actual education inside. It's just a perception. So we need to look at doing some facade, something on the outside. What that is, I don't know. Constructing a secure entry, we're pretty well there. We have a few access points that would, I would like to see changed a little bit in some way, just to keep us, if you look at, you go to any new school in Oklahoma City or Tulsa or anywhere like that, you, you don't get in unless you're part of the family. Or you have to talk to someone first. Even they, there's places where you have to be buzzed in by a camera and then you have, the only place you can go is the secretary. Or without being able to go to anywhere else in district.
But just like we talked about with our funding, you know, they have no idea in Tulsa what it's like out here. You know, I think we got a pretty secure entrance.
We have a really, we have an overall secure entrance. We do. One of our problems that we have, however, is when some of the people come in, if they catch that door at the right time, they're walking in going straight to a classroom and interrupting a class and a teacher. Because they want to pick up their kid now. And we don't know that in the office. Because if you walk down the hall, our secure entrance, because of fire, that entrance unlocks and it has a sixty-second. So if you catch it at the right time, people walk straight in and never come into the office. We do, a lot of times, we don't know that someone has come in. I see them leave. I'm like, when did they get here? You know, that, so we do need to look at something on that. Replace windows. We have single pane, old school windows. Those need to be replaced. That'll help us on heating and electric bills, just to change them. I prefer not to, for educational reasons, not to make them smaller. Natural daylight is proven to make education better. So when a lot of these buildings were built, they limited the window sizes to help with eating and air because you had single pane and you had aluminum frames and you had things that cost you.
For that, I don't get a good education, I get in the high school here.
Natural sunlight helps. And when they get to high school, they get more natural sunlight. So to the point that.
Oh.
There you go. Because of the windows. There you go. But ours do our single pane. They are costing.
I say we need to get a, you know, a list and then prioritize and see what kind of money we have and put what is needed. Like I think the windows are needed. This is the entrance I still, I don't know about, I mean, I don't like, I mean, I think it's secure. Of course, there might be a way around that. With, I mean, the walking by it and.
There's always, any, any secure system, there's always a way around.
You gonna volunteer for that?
Too much standing.
So as you can see this list, I, all these projects I had put together and called James Kerr with Kerr Three Designs and asked him to just give me some basic numbers. Ballpark numbers, you know, because I, all these I have no clue. This is off of a, built off literally a hour walkthrough where I talked as fast as I possibly could and he wrote as fast as he possibly could and he sent me this list. So if we can go through this and prioritize like you're saying and have discussion of what, and detail it more, he can give us better, more accurate numbers so we can then make financial decisions. So.
What about the rifling in the elementary where the school connects to the, I don't know what part connects to what part, but.
Gym, that part.
I think it's the oldest part connects to the next part.
That'll still be under our, our roof contractor. That's covered for two years.
But if they got it fixed, is what I'm asking.
He hasn't made it back yet.
So we have a leak in the building?
It, the last time it rang, what, month? The last time it rained, what, a month ago, two months ago, it leaked right there in the middle hall, in elementary hall, and Mick had just had heart surgery, triple bypass or something like that, so he hasn't made it make it back yet. He sent another guy, slowed it down some, but we think it's leaked since then.
Might have to be this way, but I don't care if he had heart surgery or not, I mean, that was the one, you know, reservation I had about the entire project, was that, where they come together, we all went up there, remember?
Put this garden over and now it floods down.
And I told him, I told him that, you know, that was my concern, I think everybody else agreed, and he said that he would, I mean, do everything the way he said, the way we all agreed, and he didn't do that, it's not-
He's coming back, I mean, it's not a matter of him coming back or not, he's coming back and it will get fixed, that's not a, he's come back on everything else, he just hasn't made it back yet on this one.
I'd say we need to do it for rains or snow, snow or something, so we got good drying time.
I told him, that's one thing, I told him, as soon as it does snow and it melts, then we'll really know how tight we are, because that's a slow leak, those will show up when that's, so, we've already had that conversation and be ready to come back in the spring, because I expect, you know, I expecting something to show up, when you had that many leaks, I expect something to show up. So, what about the projects, overall projects?
What about them?
What?
Are we gonna get input into this?
That's what, that's what I'm asking for. Yes, sir.
What about auditorium seats, did you happen to go in the auditorium?
I have seen them, that's not on this list, that's what, you know, that hadn't been mentioned before, so, we can-
You're, you're all right with the auditorium seats?
I'd like the auditorium completely redone.
Like what?
Yeah, go ahead and bring it up, bring it new, take down the insulation, paint it, improve the acoustics in there, put in more sound dampening, you know, all that kinda stuff, but I'm thinking from a music guy's perspective on an auditorium.
What'll they do with that insulation in there, they can't take it down, right?
I'm really don't, I don't know.
That's the same problem out on the gym, they won't take it down because it create a-
Well, I, I didn't see it on here, so I assumed you and the architect missed it.
It was never discussed.
It was never brought up.
We didn't talk about the auditorium at all, because this list put us over bonding capacity already, so.
Well, yeah, but it isn't a final list.
No, 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 this is just-
Are you saying this is a final list?
No, 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 this is preliminary, very preliminary.
I just wanna make sure I understand.
Personally, I don't even like talking about anything until we get one thing fixed, that roof still affects me, that is not perfect. That was a lot of money.
I think there was some discussion at one time, removing the old Quonset hut building out there, and setting the new ag facility, classrooms, stuff in the areas, go up that way.
I'm also curious on your, on our explanation of our finances, if I follow you correctly, on this house deal.
Yes, sir.
That if we drop two million dollars, there's a chance they're gonna shut us down, maybe, you know, two-hundred-million or whatever.
I'm not following them.
Or you said you were going to doom that they're gonna consolidate small school districts, did I understand you correctly?
That's what they're looking to do, I think that they're looking to do with that bill, whatever criteria they come out of that recommendation, we don't have a clue what that will be, whatever that standard or threshold they're gonna set.
So, would it help us or hurt us to invest all this money?
I believe, I always believe it'd help, because that shows a local bond, local support for your district, and that also ensures that your facilities are good.
Okay.
And they can't force us to shut down anyway, that's a board decision, right, the district's decision actually, doesn't a board vote to, unless you get to where you can afford to pay.
Not if you got consolidation.
If they change the rules-
If they change the rules.
If they change the rules, then they can force it, they can force it right now if you're financially mismanaged, solvency, but if you've watched what they've been trying to do the last few years, they've really been trying to push that A-through-F grade card, and in one of these bills, it's not this one, that didn't make it through this year, if you were an F school for three years, you had to automatically consolidate. So, they're looking to try to, they're looking for ways to set the rules up, to force it, but right now, they can't touch us. If we're failing kids academically-
So, is that why they don't pay Oklahoma teachers anything, it's for, I mean, they get, send the good ones elsewhere, and then they want us to fail?
You can speculate all you want, but that's a state minimum salary scale, and then they don't, you know, fund us enough to do anything else.
Yeah, I went through this in Kansas, and they ain't called it consolidation, you know, they have different names for different things, they called it unification, and I thought people were gonna get shocked.
They're reflecting redirect.
Because they went from five-hundred-and-sixty-seven school districts down to three-hundred-and-sixty-three, have a nice day.
Yep, Oklahoma's trying to do that model, right now.
That's the model they're at?
Not exactly.
Well, they've already done it, mostly, I mean, there's a lot of schools that have, but when you're thirty miles from anywhere, it's a little harder than a school seven miles down the road.
So, coming back to this, I guess, just speaking from my point of view, if, if teachers haven't had a chance to look at this, administration hasn't had a chance, maintenance hasn't had a chance, before we look at it, I'd like for them to have a shot at it, then when you get done with them, I'd like for us maybe to select some parents.
What are you talking about, on what?
On this building.
Talking about money and-
Building.
We're talking about what the community is a whole-
I agree with that.
Well, what do you think I was talking about?
Well, I didn't know, you was, you was talking about money and downsizing and that.
That's why you ask, it's okay.
That's why I asked.
Moving on. You was real plaster.
Oh, I'm sorry, Robert.
Well, like I said, you was talking about money, and then you asked this question, what are you talking about?
Moving on.
Having a look at money or the facility?
Well, I'm talking about facilities.
Okay.
Talking about facilities.
I agree, that, that, we ought to see it, get as much input from different-
Don't you agree?
Yeah, yeah.
Before we even touch it, and then even, citizens should have an opportunity, because the last one that they tried in this district did not pass. And why it didn't pass, I'm not for sure, because I don't think there was any follow-up, you understand? It didn't pass, it died, people were mad.
There's not enough information for one, everything was trying to hide, and for two, you were fixing half, you were fixing one building and spending seventy-five percent of the money.
I understand that shame, but I didn't see any follow-up study on the negative voters, you know, calling twenty of them together and saying, well, how can we improve this thing?
Right.
I heard rumors, well, this is why it failed, well, hell, I don't really know why it failed.
Well, is there anything else anybody can think of about this, or is that?
I'm with Dawn, I don't think, I mean, I'm, I didn't, you know, I don't like the idea, the whole deal, I mean, I'm still stuck on a project that we do not have finished, in my opinion, it's not finished, I'm gonna stay stuck on that till it is done.
But, there's nothing wrong with looking into the future now, yeah, we're trying to put the financing touches on this one, but we need to get our ducks in the road.
Right, but the community, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I disagree with, you know, I know what you're saying, coming to, you know, new improved school and all these things, but I, I differ, in fact, I like to, I like when I walk into something that's old, but well-taken care of and runs, runs like a new machine and performs, and has a final product that everybody wants, and when we ain't at that level yet, or we do not produce that, we can't finish what we started, I'll be damned if I think we need to be starting on something else, you know, trying to put out new just to make us look good when we're not. I think we're on the right track, I just feel that we have to get this deal finished or I can't focus on anything else, and what would the community say when they find out that, well, we got a roof up there and we don't have this fixed, and guy had a heart attack, well, every contractor we hire from now on is gonna have a heart attack, I mean, and that sounds bad, but that's the way it is. We have to do what's right in order to get, you know, move ahead, move forward. This ain't good management, I mean, if it was our home, we wouldn't be talking about building a swim pool if our roof was still leaking because the guy had a heart attack. Heart attacks are bad, he should have people, that's what he said, he's got crews that take care of this, and he's got-
Just have tunnel vision, concentrate on one thing at one time.
Well, I ain't, this, this ain't tunnel vision, that's been a broad deal for quite a few years, and we're this close to having it finished.
We can't plan?
Well, I don't think we should plan, this is, in my opinion, why the bond's done the first time, it's because it was done in here before it's taken the community and talked about with people.
Exactly, and that's what I'm saying too. Making a plan.
Well, I think you should go-
You don't wanna do any planning until this one little deal's done.
I don't think we should plan, I think he should go plan with the community and talk to people, teachers.
Isn't that what we were saying?
Well, it ain't our job to say that, that's all I'm getting at.
I think you're both trying to say the same thing, speak differently.
Yeah, pretty much. I was just saying, I agree, let's get other input on, on our plans, on what community and the teachers, the maintenance people.
I agree, I just don't think we should vote on anything here till that's, that's all I'm saying.
We ain't voting on nothing, we're just talking.
This is just a discussion, we, I, my whole goal for this was to get a, a starting point of, of just dream list, let's put a dream list.
I hate the dream list. Heard about it.
Yeah, I don't wanna wish those dreams, I want-
I mean, my deal's, we waste time on this stuff, we've done it for, I've been on the board a year and a half, we wasted time a year and a half on this right here, and got nothing accomplished, we finally got a roof going.
Got the gym painted.
We got that done, but it's just, I wanna see what happens when it snows and rains and, but I know there's a leak there now, and nothing's been done about it, and we all know why, we can see it, so, that's what's sad, is nothing's been accomplished. That's all, so I guess I'll have tunnel vision on that part. You guys worry about the rest.
It needs to get fixed, I, I thought that they would've been back at least to look at it, since we've done that.
If we touch it, we'd void the warranty, so he has to come back. All right, next, before they start again.
Well, I mean, that's something that, I mean, that needs to be talked about, it needs to happen, so.
It needs to be fixed, I agree.
Well, then we'll move forward with that, as it is, I guess item number six then is personnel, and A is discussion and possible action to contract with Alicia Myers for school psychology, psychological services.
This is for special ed testing, we have to have one.
I make a motion we approve that.
I second it.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Do you have special ed?
Item seven then is new business?
I have none.
And item eight is signing documents that I don't need to sign.
So, you don't want me to stick with the paperwork and sign?
I guess so.
It's just stuck on the page, so I could just flip to it, so that Shan wouldn't, you let me?
You know how Shan has to have this, like everybody's damn up to the side too.
Everything's not all, that's what I think.
Geez, I just put two together here, right.
Lynn, you dropped your microphone earlier, because I was standing in the hallway, it's my fault.
Yeah, it's your fault, yeah.
Put that in the papers, Shan Wilson caused me to drop it.
Is there anything else before we adjourn, anybody wants to talk about other than that, anything else at all? I don't need you in anything.
The only point I was trying to make, is that I too have been on this board a year and a half, and I was here on this last bond, and we didn't follow up with the study, we really don't know why, but this appeals to me as top-down, I want it bottom-up.
Yes.
If it's gonna fly, that's just my opinion.
Oh, that's fine, hey, that's why we had it on here to discuss, what we need to add, because it's constantly doing this.
I know it is.
And I'm, either we're gonna do something or we're not, and I'm with Shan, we need, the roof's got to get fixed, to finish up what we're doing, otherwise, what's the point of adding something else, you know?
We're even talking about it, that's my, I, I don't want tunnel vision, but I don't mind him talking with the community about it, I think you get further than that way.
I agree with that, well, that's what we were discussing, man.
I know, but we were talking about it, we're just talking and talking, okay, sorry.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
All right, then I make a motion we-
What about, he said something earlier.
No, mine's off the record. Item number nine is, then to adjourn, I make a motion we adjourn at eight oh nine.
Second.
Wilson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.